In the
Well. You guys still want to give it a couple of minutes or should we just go ahead and get rolling and then hopefully they either wander in or join on the call?
I think we should give it a couple more minutes since the first item is the salaries for nonrepresented staff and we're expected to have a decision on this tonight.
Is that, I think it was slated for discussion or decision. I didn't know. I let council know that there was no pressure on my end anyways, but I don't know if we have a deadline or something, but I just wanted to make sure that if we wanted to make one tonight, that it was on the agenda as such, but I don't know. I didn't have a necessarily.
Issue, the issue is our ability to recruit and retain a city administrator. Because the salary that was listed in the job posting was noticed as this is a schedule that has been proposed to the council. And I've been told by other city managers that if we put our old salary and we won't be able to get anybody with the current market, it's that tight right now.
And that has nothing to do with the, or does it with the representative? So, okay.
Well, it's been two more minutes, so I just want to go ahead and call to order our committee of the whole meeting. Thanks for everyone being in person or virtual. So we'll go ahead and start with the good of the order. If any council members had something for this. Anything you want to talk about or bring up?
Councilmember McHenry, can you tell that it's that I'm on the call? This is councilmember Napland.
Yes.
I logged into the phone. Okay, I heard you were waiting for people and I wasn't sure.
No, yeah, I saw you. Sorry, you were probably still joining audio. We're missing Ron or sorry, councilmember Verser and Isaacson currently, so that's who I was talking about because I saw you joining.
Okay, I'd like to bring something up for good of the order. So, um, at the last council meeting, we had a small presentation showing some options for Big Rock Ball Field. For the, the new parcel. And I know it's come up several times about possibly looking at some land surrounding that to provide more open space or an alternate parking lot or just have better circulation for vehicles and access to that park. And it doesn't, it didn't look like from that presentation that it was being designed with any of that in mind, nor have I heard any feedback on, you know, staff possibly looking into that. So it occurred to me that maybe staff needs direction from council to do something like that. And so I wanted to, at some point, ask if there was support to look into that. As a possibility. And so I don't know if that needs to be put on as an agenda item. I guess I thought that that kind of idea and request was something that was, you know, somewhat being looked at, but I don't know if, if that's already happening or if they need direction.
Yeah, so without, without any discussion on this now is, I don't know if I can make out all the head nods if, but is everyone interested in not coming to a cow at a future point in time? Looking at additional land purchases to go along with, you know, the Big Rock Ball Field's expansion?
Oh, yes.
It looks like I got a few. Sorry, Michelle, I can't see yours back there, but okay, all right, perfect. So I will write that down and then we'll try and get it on a cow coming up in the future here. Anything else for the good orders tonight?
I was gonna say, Soundstage continues to be a big hit. Good attendance, good music, good food, good everything. So glad we were able to do that full steam ahead this year.
Yeah, that's awesome. All right. So next thing is review of the regular meeting agenda. And this is usually just where we, certain items are on the consent agenda, meaning that we don't discuss each of them individually, but we just do one batch kind of vote in and accept them. So some of the things on there were besides the usual council minutes and payroll and claims approval would be the resolution admitting the fee schedule for race management, senior discount, amendment to contract for janitorial and disinfection services, contract amendment for in Vildeval Road intersection study and transportation improvement board grant requests. Was any, everyone good on keeping those on consent tonight? Now would be a good, oh, go ahead, councilmember Napland?
Sure, yeah, there was just, the grant submission item had a section that showed funding sources and then a note lower below it said something about that it might be potential items. So I'm not a hundred percent sure if you know, approving that is in any way moving that forward, that ARPA money might be used for that project, or if we would need to make it more clear that that idea wasn't something that council is asking to move forward necessarily. So I don't know if that needs to be pulled from the consent to modify that since it's included in the agenda item. It kind of makes it look like that is a proposed funding source and it hasn't been reviewed by council.
I think once, since in the cow here, we do have, when the directors come back on it after we're done with the salary discussion, maybe when we're on the ARPA part, you could bring that and ask Director Lenishewski, he probably would have the answer to that question. Does that sound good?
And yeah, sure. I just worried all of a sudden. Yeah, I wasn't sure if this was the point where I would have to pull something off consent.
Yeah, I think we just have to do it at the beginning of the council meeting, but now would be a good time to give people a heads up. So, yeah, I think that would probably fit in with our ARPA discussion in a little bit.
Which, which item was that?
I think she was talking about the transportation improvement board grant requests. Is that the correct councilmember Napland?
Yes, that is.
Okay, yeah, there was something on there that referenced using ARPA dollars. So I think just had a clarification question around that. So
On the same, a different question on that same item. So, yeah, I think that was just a little bit of discussion.
Okay. And was, was your question, Rick, more around ARPA or was it something else?
Oh, no, it was about some, the money we're allocating for Cherry Valley Road.
Okay, so it does sound like we might want to pull that one onto the normal agenda, Mayor, just definitely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Anything else on the regular council agenda that you had concerns or questions? Okay, then with that, we're going to start with our salary schedule discussion for nonrepresented staff and I'll hand it over to Mayor Okerlander.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Portem. For Corey, our newest council member's benefit, to start off with, a salary survey has been needed to be done for the city for a long, long time. This agenda item is a result of the first ever salary study that the city has ever conducted. And I'll go ahead and read into the record some of the items within the agenda bill before we get into the discussion. So, as a little bit of background, the salary survey actually was done for both nonrepresented and represented employees within the city. Council approved the recommended changes to the members of the Teamsters bargaining unit with the salary schedule at the July 19th, 22 council meeting. The changes included at least a 5% increase and were effective June 1st, 2022. The cost to implement the nonrepresented salary schedule will be approximately seventeen thousand five hundred in 2022. The cost includes moving nonrepresented employees to the step in the recommended pay grade that is closest to their current step without causing a decrease in pay as suggested by the classification compensation study with an effective date of August 1st, 2022. Per the agreement with the Teamsters Collective Bargaining Unit, the city conducted a classification and compensation study through McGrath Human Resources Group, a study which also included nonrepresented employees. As a result of the study, McGrath Consulting recommended a new salary table and structure that provides consistent steps throughout pay grades using market rates to determine into which pay grants positions belong. As noted above, the Teamsters portion of the salary study was approved by council at the July 19, 2022 council meeting, included a step in the recommended pay grade that provided at least a 5% increase and is effective June 1st, 2022. Since the placement of steps and effective date for nonrepresented employees is not bargained, nonrepresented employees have been placed on a step in the recommended pay grade that will not cause a decrease in pay and the salary schedule will have an effective date of August 16th, 2022, which is at least five days following publication of the ordinance if it is approved. Exhibit A shows the 2022 salary schedule that was adopted by council on July 19th, 2022, that includes the salary schedule with the pay grades and placement of nonrepresented positions highlighted in yellow. In addition to the new salary schedule, the following title changes were made. The executive assistant to the public works director is now public works administrative specialist. The study also included placement of two positions that are not included on the salary schedule, one of which is a management and policy analyst at pay grade 85 and the other is community engagement coordinator at pay grade 85. None of those positions are not currently budgeted, but would put them in the pay scale for potential future addition to the budget. So with that, to provide a little bit of background on the salary schedule is that we've had, besides never conducting a citywide salary schedule, we've seen significant market changes in being able to attract and retain government employees. The salary study was done, conducted in an unbiased basis based on the positions, the responsibility and the expertise needed and compared with agreed to comparable cities to come to a middle ground of salary range to be able to attract and retain candidates in the future and also make sure that we are paying close to fairly for our nonrepresented employees. So with that, I'll go ahead and open it up for questions and hopefully we can get this moving tonight because folks have been waiting quite a while for this.
I was muted. Sorry. Are there questions to the mayor? Go ahead, councilmember Schaefer.
Let's see. So I guess I do have a question first to comment. I am in favor of equitable pay between representative and nonrepresented employees. Most, most of us are. We certainly had that discussion previously, so that's not an issue in my mind. What I would like to understand is the better, is the issue around the city administrator salary? Could you, is now a good time to explain that?
Oh, absolutely. So the reason I brought that up is because in this, what's proposed and what the consultant completed is a new salary range for the city administrator. We had previously created a new salary range when we recruited the last city administrator last year. That salary was already way out of market, which is reflected in what's proposed in the McGrath study. So through conversations that I've been having with folks in city management, city administrator world and just other elected officials, city administrators and city managers are becoming harder to recruit. So we know that, I just like the Teamsters salary schedule that we just approved, the market's already shifted. So in order to make sure that we get the qualified people, it is pretty critical that we make sure that the city administrator pain range is where it needs to be to have that kind of balance of being able to attract somebody to come to the city. So the previous salary that currently exists is already way out of market. So that's why I was bringing that up as far as the urgency of trying to get something done and have that equitable path forward so that we can make sure that when we go through the interview process, we're able to tell the candidates that the salary schedule has been approved so that they don't choose not to apply based on that uncertainty.
Okay, okay. Yeah, no, I understand. So the newly approved salary schedule doesn't need to change?
Correct.
Okay, that, that's what I wanted to understand. So, okay. Good. So that's in line with equitable pay, what we in, and in line with what we've really already proved. I don't, I don't see anything different there. Is there some, something special the council needs to understand about that or just the fact that we're gonna, according to the new salaries study and schedule, we're going to be offering more?
Yeah, that's, that's a key thing. I think there had been some questions for council on differences in public director, public works director, police chief and other position salaries. And there had been some confusion as to how those came about. And Mayor Portem McHenry and I did meet separately with Dr. McGrath and asked significant questions to make sure that those salaries were in line and weren't changed and that they were in line with what the comps showed. So previously, the city had a structure five years ago where all directors had the same pay scale that was supposed to be equitable and it wasn't even close because you had a brand new director making top of the scale and experienced directors making middle or lower. So now, now this is aligned with actual government standards and what the market is paying for those positions.
Sure. Yeah, well, they're different, different skills.
Yes.
So that's, that's understandable. And that, that's all been previously discussed, right? As far as I'm concerned, that's water under the bridge unless somebody has something new to add or, you know, additional concerns of what we've already, already discussed.
Are there other questions? Oh, sorry. Go ahead, councilmember Hoag.
So, I'm not sure that I have a question as much as a statement.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm not comfortable with the current salary study or the, my, where my problem lies is so the whole time I've been on council, our community development director has always made the same amount of money as our police chief. And there was some discrepancy because our police chief was getting a car allowance, I believe, or maybe he decided not to take one and our community development director is still, she's still getting a stipend for being a being the city administrator pro tem or I'm trying to remember the term we call what she's, her, her job title is, but she's getting a stipend for that. The, the current public works director is getting a stipend of $500, I believe, for a car allowance. And there's just, to me, I'm just, I've I just am very uncomfortable with our community development director making such a lower amount than our police chief and public works director. She may not have as many employees underneath her, but she does the job of 10 people. Maybe I'm exaggerating, but I, you know what I'm trying to say is that she she takes on a lot for our city and I'm trying to, it just doesn't seem equitable to me and so I'm not in favor of the current draft. That's more of a statement than a question.
Yeah, and I should, sorry, it's not just questions. It's, you know, obviously discussions. So sorry, seemed a little bit there. Councilmember Napland, go ahead.
Sure, I have similar concerns and I, I think when council approved a salary study, my understanding is that it would look at add-ons to pay, which would include stipends, car allowances, things like that. My understanding of the process was that it would also include, you know, there would be a chance at the beginning of the process to provide feedback of what job responsibilities are to the consultant. The consultant would review job descriptions and then go and look at the comparable cities and create an unbiased proposal recommendation. And that beginning part happened and an initial draft was provided and then from what I have observed, it seems that certain departments' positions advocated for additional pay for certain positions and it, it seems certain departments that happen quite a bit in. And what came forward to council as the recommendation for the, from the consultant is this modified where a secondary level of administrative feedback was provided. And that is not how I envisioned it. I mean, it, it makes me feel uncomfortable. There's a two-band pay-band differential between our management, in addition to those that are, the, the two directors that are two pay bands above the other two directors, both have a vehicle compensation. One has a take-home vehicle, they get gas paid, everything. The other one has a $500 car allowance. I, I feel uncomfortable with it. I, I, it wasn't the initial recommendation from the consultant and there was opportunity to provide information about job duties and responsibilities. I, I also feel like you can't just look at number of employees reporting, but you have to look at scope of responsibility. I'll just use this as an example. Community development director runs public hearings and has an entire planning commission to manage, which is a huge responsibility that aren't direct employees of the city, but those commissioners are that director's responsibility. So I, I don't want to go into too much detail and I know this has been discussed before, but it has not been discussed in public and I feel it's important to share why I will not be in favor of this. Secondly, the community engagement and management policy analysts are being added to our list of positions in the city. These have, positions have not been approved. I do not have job descriptions of what that entails. And I do not feel comfortable at this time approving a salary schedule for positions that are number one, not funded and have not been you know, reviewed for what the job duties are. So that, these are kind of new positions and I, I, they are not approved positions. And so it seems a little bit premature to, by ordinance, adopt those positions as well at this time. We could leave those to the side and if we want to add them later, potentially we could do that, but I, I'm a little taken aback that they would be added at this point.
Thank you, councilmember Napland. Mayor Okerlander, I saw your hand up.
Thank you. So first of all, those positions have always been in this. So the councils had access to this document for several months. So you can choose to take them out, but the point is the work is done. So if those point, positions are added in the next cycle, then we have our pre-salary schedule that's based on all of the same information that we already have and that was done for all the other positions. I want to also point out it's a 100% factually inaccurate that directors ask for higher pay than others. I want to make that very clear. Mayor Portem McHenry and I confirmed that with Dr. McGrath. And that, in fact, community development directors are based on our community development director does the same that other community development directors do. And that when we look at fair and equitable, we have to look at the roles and responsibilities, which was Dr. McGrath's life's work. So I need to make, again, no director asked for more money than what was originally proposed by the consultant. So I do want to go back to a couple of other things too for a point of clarification is that, yes, community development director does have a side contract as a deputy city administrator. That was a position that was given before I even came into office and when I became into office, we did approve a stipend, monthly stipend for that five hours a month. At, at another point, council approved the contract for that. I need to also make clear that in the community development director, when I came into office, after we had some staffs changes the first year, I did in fact raise the community development director's salary to the stop, top step and took a ton of heat from this council for doing so because it was the right thing to do. Now we're looking at, you know, we're comparing apples to oranges with roles and responsibilities and what people do and the market. And the whole part of the point of this salary survey is to make sure that the city is no longer making salary schedules in decisions based on the person and the role, but on what the market and what the skill set and the job requires. So what we're looking at is specifically what the criteria that council put forth and was agreed to with the consultant to look at these positions and make sure that we are right for the market. We have employees that do a lot. All of our employees, I would say guaranteed, do more than most people in other cities. This council is welcome to raise the salary and I don't have any opposition to that, but I do want to note that if you're looking at equity in roles and responsibilities and positions across cities, that would, by changing this to a different standard than all of the other nonrepresented positions, you're creating an inequity amongst roles and positions. So of note on the public works car stipend, one of the reasons that was approved in contract when the public works director was hired is because our salary scale was so out of whack. I would also note that the public works director is willing to reopen his contract and remove that, that car stipend to go with the new salary schedule that is, gets him as with every other employee at the step that makes it slightly above what he's receiving now. And he's agreed to allow me to share that information. So in regards to the police chief, you know, we did have a take-home vehicle and that's actually pretty standard. So there, and, and I also want to point out that our employees lack a lot of benefits that others do. And in fact, I think it's really important for this public discussion to note that our public works director took an $85,000 a year pay cut to come to work at the city of Duval. So that is a city that is just less than 10 miles away from us where our public works director came from. And that's just an indication of where we at in the market. When the salary study kicked off, council made it very clear you didn't want to be at the top of the salary range of the market. You wanted to be in the middle. That's what Dr. McGrath did. And so, you know, I, I appreciate the concerns, but I'm, I'm very concerned that there's information out there that's incorrect about directors asking for higher salaries. That has never once happened in my entire career at the city of Duval.
Thank you. Councilmember Napland?
I just want to clarify. I, I'd never meant to say, nor did I say that directors advocated for their own pay raise. I said there was input provided by administration, I don't know who, between the initial draft that was done based on feedback from everyone and looking at market rates, among other comparables. That initial draft had one set of numbers. Additional input from within the city was provided to the consultant and the final draft is significantly different. So I don't know what happened in between there, who advocated for what, but significant changes were made. And if you look at the pay, it is now outside of the median market value. The idea was median market value. That is what was provided at the initial draft. Changes were made. I'm not making any accusations of who made the changes. I just want to establish that I am not accusing directors of advocating for their own pay raise, but there was between the recommendation from the consultant and the final recommendation from the consultant that came to council after additional feedback was provided from within the city. So I just want to make that.
Councilmember McHenry, do you mind sharing?
I was, I was gonna go ahead and then, and then councilmember Schaefer, I'll get to you next. I just wanted to kind of, you know, in my discussion with Dr. McGrath, she had said it's the common practice in all the cities that, you know, you start with one version and kind of put it out there and then you information gather more, you know, you talk to, you dig into the details of like what the people within the specific city that she's working in does and, and reevaluate and then it's very common to have multiple versions before the final version gets adopted. And, you know, it's about taking all the different factors into consideration. I know that can be, I understand that's been a source of frustration though, is not fully getting to peek behind the curtain and understand how that works or what exactly was said or done. I know that's, you know, been frustrating for many. And then councilmember Hogan mentioned something too that I just wanted to say, I, it is really challenging when, you know, you have to kind of separate the value that we place on employees and this is just where I'm coming from. Because, I mean, everyone is so valuable and they go above and beyond. So it's, it's hard sometimes to see people at different levels on a scale. However, for me personally, where I'm coming from with director salaries is, you know, we have to base it on a certain number of factors, you know, and it has to be like how many people they manage, what's the skill set, you know, it's, it's looking at all the comparables of the other cities, but also looking specifically at what this, you know, position, the position, not the person, you know, like what does this position do in our city? But I get it. I know this has been a challenging conversation from day one and I just, I just want to say I really appreciate everyone being willing, willing to clarify their own points and continue this conversation even though it's difficult. And with that, I'll go to councilmember Schaefer.
So, per councilmember Napland's comment, I am, I am under the uh, I am, I am under the threat impression that the study reflected the median salary for the particular uh, position, like for like as much as possible, uh, of saying, you know, same position in the select other cities. If that's not the case, I'd like to know that. Uh, so, and if I'm under the wrong impression, I think most of the council then is under the wrong impression. So Councilmember Napland, I think all of those numbers are, are, you know, part of our data. Can you, can you, uh, present an example, one example even of where that's not the case, where our salary study is higher than the representative median salaries of these other cities?
Councilmember Napland, respond, go ahead.
There are quite a few positions and I did provide an email to the rest of council summarizing my concerns with this exact issue. And I had, when I tried to discuss it, I will just try to be in general about this is that, um, well, let me just start back. I had requested from the beginning that we put in a table, current pay, median pay based on comparables and proposed pay and line them up side by side. I did do that because staff and the consultant did not do that even after multiple requests. I laid them out side by side because I had noticed this discrepancy and it concerned me greatly. Because my understanding is that we were going to pay the median. And that is not what happened. Additional input was provided from I do not know who and certain positions are outside the median. And it had never been presented side by side to make this clear that there was some discrepancies in certain positions. Now, my understanding is administration felt like there were ex, you know, extraneous or whatever circumstances that warranted this, but I still didn't feel comfortable with it. And I don't think it's been completely explained. Uh, so I, I don't have my papers in front of me. Um, I'm, I'm working on my cell phone right now. So, um, but if you go back and you look at the email that I sent, I lined those up where it has the current pay, the median pay that the consultant uh, calculated based on comparable cities and what is proposed. And you can see there are several positions that are well outside that median range.
Okay, I'll look at that again. None of those numbers have changed, I guess, since you wrote that email. Is that correct?
I don't believe.
Councilmember Napland, that cut off, sorry, because I started talking at the same time. What were you gonna say?
I don't believe that it has changed since the draft was provided to council, but if, what is interesting is if you look at the draft that was originally provided, you know, after these iterative processes, um, you will see that the pay was set more at the median. And quite a few positions, there was some advocacy at some point or additional feedback provided that positions were moved outside of that median.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Mayor Okerlander and then, uh, Councilmember Lovett, I'll get to you after, okay?
Thank you, Mayor Pretend. So Councilmember Napland, you're referring to a couple of positions that were in the represented salary schedule. And those positions fell outside of what a standard job description, what those, um, positions actually entailed. Um, and that was part of the additional information gathering. To make it clear, administration did not influence the director and non-represented salaries. Okay? Uh, that keeps getting said, that did not happen, right? If they're asked for feedback, that feedback is in relation to their job duties and responsibilities. Our staff did not influence, nor did I, to be very, very clear, I stayed independent and clear to let the consultant do her work in an unbiased fashion, um, did not influence that whatsoever. So there are, as in any salary s- schedule and survey like Councilmember Schaefer did mention, there are some minor changes. That's based on additional information gathering and that was solely in the non-re- represented at the discretion of the consultant. Directors did advocate for a couple of the positions that you already approved, uh, that council did already approve. Um, and I also want to make clear that there was plenty of opportunity and months. Um, and we did have a meeting that had to end abruptly, um, on this subject. Um, and it cut off the opportunity for most of council to get, uh, answers to their questions. So, um, you know, this is, you know, we're, we're going over the same things that we've gone over multiple times. The bottom line is this is an unbiased survey. We are in a great resignation with multiple, with government employees being very difficult to attract. In fact, having multiple vacant positions at the city that we're having difficulty recruiting. And if one of our directors goes out the door, if we don't approve a new salary schedule, we're going to be in a lot of trouble as a city. Uh, we are already understaffed and overburdened. Um, and that's one of the reasons I know that council members are talking about all the hard work that our, our directors do. They do far more than most directors, but, and we can, I've fully would be okay if you want to go above the median for our, our directors, but I would also recommend that it be across the board, um, based on the median and then choosing something above that, but also recognize that that wouldn't necessarily be fair to the representative employees.
Councilmember Lovett, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I guess to take a couple of questions. Uh, the first question is, is the concern, um, about, I guess, the first question is, is the concern with the, the salaries that are, uh, on the higher level that, that are kind of in discussion? Is the concern there that the, that we would have to bear the weight of that salary? Maybe we're not comfortable with the financial, um, like agreeing to that sort of financial responsibility long-term. So that's question one. Question number two is the issue that I'm hearing about the fact that like, it's just not fair. Like, is it like, is it, are we talking more like, okay, well, it doesn't feel fair that A is getting paid more than B or B is getting more paid than A or however you do it. What is the, is it an equitable problem that we're having or is it more like a, hey, I, we don't want to be on the hook for this kind of financial burden? Long-term, we're worried about the number, the finances. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it, Councilmember Lovett, I, I've heard it's, it's both. Um, however, again, the positions are very different skillsets and professional qualifications. So just like in any industry, you don't pay somebody because they're a director the same amount of money. You pay based on the skill and qualifications. Um, as far as financially, um, we, in most cities in the state are in a position where you can't afford not to raise the salaries. Um, case in point, um, our last city administrator process did not work out as planned. Um, and I guarantee that part of that had to do with salary and cost of living in our region. Um, so we've had, uh, our community development directors had a senior planner position open for a couple of months now with no applicants. Um, the city of Covington has six planning positions open, all at the senior planner range with no applicants. Um, the problem now that we're running into is being able to actually get people to apply for jobs and then have qualified people, uh, for the jobs. Um, so it's a really tough position to be in. However, um, as a city, we have a responsibility to have these positions filled and many of them have legal statutory um, requirements. Um, and if we can't fill positions, we can't keep up with our statutory requirements and then we're not following the law, nor are we providing the services that we're required to provide to our community.
Yeah, and I would just quickly add to that as well, Councilmember Lovett, that I think, you know, and coming from Councilmember Hogan and Appleton, and you guys can shout if I'm, you know, paraphrasing the strong, but I think in general, like, even something that seems like a small bump up or something, you know, you have to look at it so far down the line and it kind of, you know, accumulates or, or becomes a larger sum overall. So I, I understand their concerns or um, in the overall financial, you know, longevity of it all. Did you have any additional questions then?
Yeah, yeah, I think it did.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Schaefer, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Um, so, so, I like data, I like simplified data. Uh, if possible, I'd like to see a single example and let's take the, the public works director as that example. That's one of our higher director salaries. Is, and, and Councilmember Napland, I, I'm sorry, because I don't remember if that was on your list or, or not, but is it, you're, are you under the impression that that particular position uh, in our salary, uh, proposed salary, uh, schedule is higher paid than the median of other, the other cities taken into account?
Councilmember Napland, if you want to respond, go ahead.
I'm trying to find the email that I sent. I do not have my computer in front of me. I, if I remember right, um, I'll just, I think it was the police chief, the one, well, either way, in the first draft, both the police chief and the public works director were in one band lower. So they were placed, I believe, one band higher than the other two directors. And then the second draft or the whatever, the final draft after input, additional input was given, they were moved another step up that put them at a two-step differential. Plus, the car allowance was not taken into account. So, and if you take that into account, that there was a, compared to the market, there was a discrepancy. And on the police chief, I believe the market showed the range, um, the market median range would give a max salary of, I think, 160,000. And I think the band that that position was put into gives it a $175,000 maximum. I, I'm not trying to get into the details again. I've tried to provide that in the past. I've analyzed this. I want to pay employees fairly. That is my goal. And the only reason I am discussing this in a public manner on such sensitive, sensitive topic is because I don't want anyone to feel that I know vote doesn't mean I think we should pay employees fairly. So I have done my personal analysis. I've tried to share it and I don't, I don't, I'm not prepared to get into the details. I feel like I had that in.
Okay, we lost her. Um, I saw Mayor Okerlander had her hand up unless, Rick, did you have a response to that or did you want us?
Yeah, I, I mean, without, without specific examples, and I don't care what the first draft or second draft said, what I care about is what the median salary is out there for this, for the cities that were served. That's all I care about. So forgetting about first or second drafts. Um, I'd like to see what the public works director and the police chief, how our salaries, uh, schedule compares with those medium, medium numbers. Um, so if they change at some point, fine, but I want to see what the latest median numbers are. Cause so maybe that's what changed and, uh, and bump things up. Um, and without that information, uh, I'm, you know, I'm still of the same impression. I want to, uh, vote in favor of this and move it, uh, move it forward.
Thank you. Yeah, just really quick and then I'll go to you, Mayor. I, I think what Councilmember Napland was saying is, um, she had, you know, because I had asked her, she had a lot of ideas on it. I'm like, can you just put that together and send out to everyone so they can read? And this was, I mean, probably months ago, it's been a while since this has been discussed, you know, um, so I think that's what she's saying is she's recognizing that she doesn't want to get into it again because she has sent out her specific views with examples before. Um, I don't remember the date on that email. Um, but at this point, I'm not sure, frankly, if you're, you know, uh, uh, because I just don't know that we're going to fully open it back up. I think that's the point she was trying to make. Um, Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, and one more note on the public works director position is that, um, some of the comparable cities that we compare to don't have their own utilities the way we do. Our city of Duval Public Works Department is full service to every definition of full service. They have parks, they have a water utility, a sewer utility, streets utility, um, and all of the basics that public entail public works. Um, so when you, that's another thing that the consultant considers is looking at that res- the level of responsibility as well. So, um, when you look at if, if there is any, and I'm not saying there is, but if there is any discrepancy as far as median, um, that would be the information that the consultant took into consideration, um, when developing this salary schedule. Uh, because for example, a city of Woodinville Public Works Director has far less responsibility than the city of Duval. Again, City of Samamish Public Works Director had far less responsibility than this Public Works Director, City of Duval. Our Public Works Director makes $85,000 a year less than if he was still at the city of Samamish. So that is a simple idea to show you that we might be a median, but there might be a little bit, look a little bit off, but if it's based on what the consultant was charged with, with what came out of the data, um, then she's done her job. Um, and if council wants to change the salaries and put a couple of folks up and above that median, you're welcome to, but just make sure you know that this is, um, that then we are creating an, an equitable situation again, is based on job responsibilities and titles.
Mayor, I had a quick question. You had mentioned that the public works director had, you know, the thing about the car allowance and opening back up the contract. Is that something that would need, i- if council was interested in that, is that something we need to loop in with this or is that just something separately on the side? I just wanted to clarify.
It would be a separate, we would open up his contract and change his contract and put him at the appropriate step. And remove the car allowance.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't anything that would be tied in with this in particular. So, thank you.
Um, and actually I just got an email from, um, from our, uh, finance director, um, to let me know that, oops, hold on here. Page two, the final policy manual that council has, uh, police chief market minimum is 140, max is 173,695. So we are right there with the police chief.
I just wanted to, uh, give Councilmember Napland a chance. I know you dropped off and came on. I was trying to paraphrase the point I think you were trying to make. Um, so I just wanted to give you a chance since you came back on, Councilmember Napland, or were you done basically? I wasn't sure with the timing of your drop off there.
I'm done. I just, I really, as you explained it well, I didn't want to rehash this. I wanted to explain why I was not in support and that I felt uncomfortable on several things. I think it's past the point. You know, I think everyone's made their mind up, so I don't need to get into the nitty gritty of it. So I will leave it at that.
All right, thank you. Um, any other comments, questions, discussion on this item? Uh, sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Hope.
So I'm, I would think that we would need to address the car allowance in this decision because if we don't, the contract that we currently have would stand.
Well, and that's just it. So the public works director has agreed that if this new salary schedule is approved, he would be willing to open up his contract. So he's not going to open up his contract if he doesn't have the new salary schedule. Um, so on, that's a smart move as far as negotiation on an employee's part. I don't know if Mr. Kenny has anything to add to that.
Yeah, I guess I would just note that my, my understanding of his, um, proposal or willingness to do that is that his, um, uh, I hope I get this right, his gross pay, his pay plus the, um, stipend for the, uh, car allowance would then be used to then place him on the new salary schedule. Um, and so no less than what that cumulative total would be. Um, and so we, we would need to do an amendment to that contract. That contract wouldn't go away. I'm sure there's other provisions that would remain. And so we need to do that separately. Once this is in place and then he would be placed at that, uh, level, that step that would match that cumulative total that he was having yesterday, uh, for example.
Thank you. Um, any other questions, comments? Right, not hearing or seeing any. Um, so Mayor, did you want to, or maybe it's our clerk is letting directors know to join the meeting? Yes?
Yeah, and I think I had one final question and that is, um, trying to gauge where people are at, if, um, council's ready to move this board this evening or not, um, because we're, we're starting to run into, you know, this has been out for six months, almost six months now. Um, and we're recruiting for one of the most critical positions in the city. Um, and if you want to raise salaries of others, you can do it arbitrarily or you can come back and do it as well. So, Mr. Kenny?
Uh, just one, one quick comment on the, on the timing. Just one, one quick comment on the, on the timing. And I was talking to Dana about this. The, uh, the ordinance takes five days after publication to become effective. And so the, if it was to wait until the next meeting, that'll miss the mid-month pay period. And so it wouldn't be effective until next month, if it didn't get passed tonight. And so I just want people to understand that there is certain timelines to hit a pay period. And so really, it's, it's the first meeting in the month to get it during this month. And then, of course, for recruitment as well for the city administrator getting that in there, because I know that that is coming down the line very quickly as well.
Go ahead, uh, councilmember Schiefer, then Hope.
So I would be in favor with a couple amendments. Um, I'd like to see a differential between the community development director. Possibly the finance director and the police chief and public works director of one step. So whether that means one comes down or one goes up, I don't know, but that's. I'm more comfortable with that. I'd like to see that as an amendment. And I'd also, I know councilmember Napland mentioned. And I can't seem to find it on here that there's a job that hasn't been approved by council. I'd like a footnote. That says pending approval by council on whatever positions those were. And I think that's all that I wanted to say. Thank you.
Yeah, to be clear, only approving a table of position cannot be hired unless it's approved in the budget. So you're, so you can do that, but just of note that you're creating an entire agenda bill and several more hours work for our staff to do it that way.
Is there any discussion on, I mean, I just, this might be a good opportunity or we could wait until the council meeting to discuss it more, but. You know, um, what councilmember Hope just brought up, um, Mayor, did you have anything on the step? In, you know, where people are put at certain steps on the director level there?
Um, you know, we would always, if, um. The way that this would work is they go to the next step higher than where they're at now, right? So nobody goes backwards. Um, council, if council wanted to direct me to reopen contracts and put people at different steps. Um, at higher steps, that is an option as well. Um, and that's not, but you do have to reopen the contract to be able to do that, uh, because all of our directors have, uh, employment contracts with the city.
And is that something we would propose as an amendment with this, um, adoption? Mayor?
I don't, I think I would defer to our attorney. I don't think it would necessarily be an amendment. I think it would be, um, a conversation in a separate motion.
Promotion.
Directing the mayor to reopen. Um, but you know, I think you also need to be aware that, um. Typically, you know, when you, when you do reopen contracts, um, that it's, uh. That it can get tricky, um. Because you might open the Pandora's box for others as well. Now, I don't, our staff are not like that, but I just wanted to point that out.
Um, councilmember Hope, did you want to follow up on that? And then I'll go to councilmember Napland.
I guess I wanted to kind of clarify, I'm not saying that we should reduce the current salary. Of an employee. Uh, the, I don't want to open up the contracts again, except for maybe for the, um, the car allowance. But it's more of that this pay scale. Should be a step different than the other pay scale. So right now, there's like a twenty thousand, twenty, over twenty thousand dollar. Difference in salary between the two, and I just. I don't. Yeah.
Hey, councilmember Napland?
Yeah, just a quick point of clarification. I think we might have, I, I think there might be a disconnect on. The pay band or the pay grade versus the step an employee is within their pay band.
Yeah.
And the issue I believe councilmember Hoag is referring to is what pay band.
Yes.
The director for these employees have been put in, not the exact step within the band. And so I think she's referring to the pay band, the range of salaries. The, the range of two of our directors. Um, is in one, one band, the other two directors are two full bands.
Yep.
Above. And so I, I think that there might be, uh, is that correct?
Yes, okay, yes.
We lost her again. Uh, Mayor Okerlander, go ahead.
Yeah, um, so that's a, thank you for that clarification. And again, I go back to the analysis of the positions. And what, um, what those position responsibilities are and what market is. Um, so those bands are different because of the market and because of the skill set base and the responsibilities. Um, so this is taking an individual out of that process and looking at the city holistically and being fair and equitable. Um, now, if council wants to change those bands of those directors, you're welcome to. Um, but I promised at the beginning of this that I would support what the salary can, survey consultant brought out. Uh, because of that unbiased scientific approach. Um, and I still do support that. But I'm not opposed if council wants to change the other bands, um, which you could do with a simple motion. Um, so, but acknowledge, yeah, I also need counsel to acknowledge that then that also puts us way, puts us out of market. And puts those two positions above market in relation to the other director positions.
Go ahead, councilmember Schiefer.
Sorry, one, one more thing. Uh, the mayor asked, uh, the council level for voting on this in our regular council meeting tonight. Uh, so question, uh, sir, do we have any confirmation from the other council members? Are they going to make it or you just haven't heard?
No, I didn't hear anything from them.
Okay, okay. So here's, I have two concerns that one, we, you know, we, we do have a quorum, but we may have a kind of an inequitable representation. At war. Second is, uh. Based on how we previously voted, I see a two-to-two split, which would put, uh, councilmember Lovett right in the middle. And he as a brand-new council member would be, uh, making the deciding vote, uh, on this. Uh, I'm not sure how he feels about that, but it may, you know, being brand-new, that may not be a very comfortable position for him to be in. Uh, however, based on what Daniel said, uh, we are under a timeline, uh, here. So. I, you know, I have concerns about voting, uh, tonight, since we don't have full council representation.
Uh, Mr. Kenny?
I, I just wanted to clarify, I was just identifying timelines that are applicable. I, I didn't mean to imply that you need to vote tonight by any means, but if, if, if it gets pushed a meeting. You can just use those timelines to understand the impact. That, that was my only intention.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Kenny, I have a quick question and then I'll go to you, councilmember Lovett. Um, is there any way to, for council to approve something and retroactively? Date it to a, you know, like a back pay type of thing, or are we not allowed to do that?
Un- unfortunately not, um, retroactive pay outside of a, uh, it was okay because it was negotiated in the union agreement. Um, and that's why that happened there. Uh, otherwise, um, kind of retroactive, um, back pay is not, not allowed.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councilmember Lovett?
Well, uh, yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate you, uh, looking out for me on the hot, hot seat there. Um. Yeah, I think, uh, you know, I think for me, I need a little bit more information. I guess, you know, what, what I, what I'm bumping up against is that like. It seems like to me, I mean, like, kind of like councilmember Napland said, like, I'm all for. You know, paying these people fairly. And, uh, if, if this study was done. And it seems like the way to best, you know, uh, you know, position ourselves as a city to get, you know, critical roles in place. That all seems like a really good thing. What I'm curious and what I haven't heard like clearly. Is what is the big blocker? Like I hear that there are some like steps and there's some like, well, this role and that role, but I'll be the first to say that like. A director of one thing in my world versus a director of another thing, they both say director, but the pay scale is very, very different. So just based on skills, like that's just life. So I'm wondering if there's another. I'm, I'm wondering what the other blocker is, like, I'm, I'm, can, I'm, it's like, it's a buried thing. And maybe it was a deeper conversation that happened way before I got here that I just don't have the context to, to your point. Um, but I, I don't know, I'm just trying to understand what that, what we're bumping up against beyond maybe just what seems like. These roles being closer to each other in pay. Like, that seems like the one thing I keep hearing, but is there a bigger thing? I don't know. Curious.
I think I would go ahead and chime in, you know, I don't see any other hands. I, I would just say, I think that some of that missing context might be. Uh, disagreements on, you know, how the salary survey was conducted perhaps, or, um, you know, not under. Not, not understanding, but just, um, disagreements on like how it came about, you know. And how it worked through the different versions and got from point A to point B to the final version. So that's a really super simplified version of probably what really happened. Um, but I'm just trying to keep it high level. Did anyone else, um, have anything they wanted to add to? I don't know, provide a little context or any other comments at this point, or councilmember Lovett, if you still have something, go for it.
No, I'd be interested in what the council members that aren't at this meeting think, just based on they've had just more historically, they've been in longer of a conversation. So, yeah, but what you said is helpful, paints a little bit more of a picture.
Did we gain another council? Oh, no, okay. Um, yeah, um, all right. Well, Mayor, I don't know that you have your answer to what your question was. Um, it's on our agenda for the council tonight. So did you have anything else to add at this point or should we move on?
Um, I don't have anything else to add. Um, you know, the other two, I know I've, I've had conversations with councilmember Isaacson. I can't speak for him. Um, I recall much of what councilmember Mercer has said in meetings, can't speak for him. Um, I do suspect the votes are there to approve it as is, um, but without confirmation from either one of them. I can't, I can't guarantee that, um, and I can't speak for them. Um, so I'm hopeful that they'll be, uh, at the council meeting this evening, um, but if not, we might, uh. Let's ask, uh, our city attorney, Mr. Kenny, if, um, would we be able to approve that new salary schedule? Just for the city administrator tonight?
Um. Uh, that's interesting. So, yeah, I mean, I think so. It's the, the, the agenda bill is for all of it. And I think a motion for a portion of that agenda bill would be fine. Um. So, yeah, I think so.
Thank you.
That sounds like it could be a good compromise tonight to get what we don't, need to get done, done. And then hopefully at the next meeting have the other council members to also add to the conversation.
Yes, and just as a final closing note, um, I re-forwarded the final policy manual from the consultant to all of council. Um, and actually, uh, councilmember Lovett, I know, I just realized I need to send it to a different email, uh, since you don't have your computer yet. Um, so I will get that over to you as well. Um, so please feel free to review it and call me or mayor part time with any questions you might have on that.
All right, so with that, we'll go ahead and move on to our, our discussion if we could get, uh, Director Lenaszewski in here. And then I'm, Mayor, I'm just suspecting we may need to possibly move the biennial budget format to the council meeting. If that's okay.
I think so too. And again, if the other council members, that's definitely going to be a hot topic. So, um, that is a new introduction to the other council members. Um, so we might want to postpone that if they don't, aren't here.
All right.
Steve is coming, is on his way.
All right, sounds good. No, no.
No, I don't think so. We're still, okay.
All right. Gaining a couple people here. Here we go. All right. Uh, Director Lenaszewski, are you on now? I wasn't sure if your audio is still connecting.
I'm on, but.
All right, you are up, sir. We're on ARPA discussion and you're leading it. Go for it.
There we are. Too many cameras on this computer at home. Uh, let's see, how is everybody doing?
Good, good.
Steve Lenaszewski, Public Works. All right, so. Your screen. I don't want to undersell what we're talking about here, but it was just a little bit of a comeback on ARPA. And maybe a quick intro is in the file there for anybody who hasn't been exposed to our American Rescue Plan Act project list. Um, we did do, where is this? A little bit of the summary, two-point-two million previously in acknowledged funds. Seventy-two thousand appropriated for some utility assistance and personal protective equipment through the process of COVID and timeline. Uh, we have allocated two-hundred-sixty-two thousand for other small various projects and equipment. There's one-point-nine million remaining. This was, uh, pushed over to Pub Works Committee. Prior to and at the end of a robust discussion on some of the topics that were at hand. Um, facade, intersection, parks, trails, city facilities improvements, some public art, Big Rock and human services. Kind of whittled it down to several programs we're investigating, uh, still working on a business facade, fridge improvement grant program. Uh, we shall talk about that next week at committee. Uh, in the packet is a summary of the Woodinville, Duval and Two-O-Three Intersection Project. Should we want to? Go with that as discussed at the last meeting. Sorry, I'm looking at my right screen here. Um. I can touch more on that after we get on to the streetscape enhancements and a little summary of the public speaker slash media system. We talked about at last, last meeting. Uh, so the speaker system we have looked into. I think, uh, councilmember Schiefer was talking about maybe a larger section of town. The quote we had was thirteen thousand, five hundred. It's an eight-speaker system. There are two packs each, so you would get like. Eight poles at two speakers each. Um, I'm going to skip ahead and I'll come back. Kind of looking at your downtown core, the right of your screen would be Stevens and Main Street. The left of your screen, you go Stella, Cherry, Stewart. The feed store is the corner there, so that's just kind of how you would stagger eight speakers throughout the Old Town Core. And yes, I think councilmember Schiefer, the eighteen thousand, five hundred would get you, you know, three blocks or so. I think you were talking maybe about more along the lines of another block to the north and maybe a block and a half further to the south. So you could do the math and double that. You're at just under forty thousand. Here. Winding the screen out. Um, so then hopping back, I think some of the topics on, on the what and the why. And again, I'm not necessarily in favor or opposed, but just here to provide information. Um, you know, economic development, information sharing, event sponsorship support. The kits include the speakers, transmitters, the antenna, and again, all that would be necessary to light it up. I know putting councilmember Schiefer on the spot a little bit, kind of gave him a little narrative to chat with the chamber about. I wasn't sure if he had heard back from anybody because it is like, you know, new and it could be great. It could be, you know, something to handle, which is a little out of the norm, um, but still robust in and of itself. Uh, I'm not sure what other sort of discussions we need to have. Something like we maybe want to invite the chamber to discuss either at a meeting or at one of their meetings. Um, so I might just defer to councilmember Schiefer real quick on if he had had any luck, uh, chatting with folks. I know it is summer and people are pretty scattered about, so a little hard to, to grab people.
Yeah, and the chamber meets, I think it's Thursday, Steve. So, so no, no, I haven't. Um, but so, and we haven't had a meeting in the last, uh, last few weeks. Uh, we do have, we do have an email from the chamber some, I don't know, two months ago or, or more. That, you know, requested, they, you know, a, a downtown speaker system. So we know the support is there. The questions I think are more in the details, uh, how we choose, you know, what, you know, what kind of music. Uh, you know, who, you know, what can, you know, what, or what kind of information gets broadcast? Where that, you know, where the transmitters, you know, the sources for the music or whatever might actually be located. Uh, you know, assuming we pay for it or our ARPA funds pay for it, I would say the city needs to control that. Uh, if it can be used or should be used for, uh, safety purposes. And maybe have a transmitter in the police department or something like that. I mean, tho- those are a lot of the outstanding questions that the. I mean, tho- those are a lot of the outstanding questions that the chamber can at least address some of. Uh, I, I think and give, give us some more details. Uh, my proposal to actually expand this, which would probably, probably put the cost, you know, based on what you, your three block estimates, Steve, which is really useful by the way, but it probably put the cost more around 50 grand. If we did that, that bigger deployment, uh, that I'd like also get feedback from the chamber on. Um, and if there's individual businesses, which I know there is, that are not represented, uh, on, by the chamber. I can, uh, attempt to get feedback from them, uh, as, as well, because I certainly know some of those, some of those businesses.
Director Lenaszewski, did you want more questions now, or did you have more to go through first?
I mean, really, it was to come back and at least reiterate and re, re bring forward the cost of that system. Uh, talk about how far that cost would go relative to what we had, you know, quoted before. Yeah, I know it's open for discussion. Uh, like I said, it's one of those things, you know, how to spend that on what we spend it on. You know, for the community, and I think, I, I hope Ricky liked the bottom right picture there. So not only is the speaker system on a pole, but it's got some baskets for you.
So I don't see any hands. Um, I had a couple of questions on this particular item. I thought it's okay. Um, I think, you know, just to reiterate, um, love talking to the chamber and, and, you know, involving them and working with them, but I really want to make sure like, and I'm happy to also go directly into main street businesses and, and just have a quick conversation with the business owners and just make sure here is what their concerns. Or maybe it's all, you know, wonderful and, and they, they're excited by it. I, I think for me, that's the main thing that I want to hear is that the people who have businesses on Main Street, uh, like the idea. And, um, and any concerns or questions they have get addressed before we spend money on this. Uh, that's my biggest, uh, roadblock potentially to just giving a thumbs up. Um, and then I think also in general, I was curious. I'm sure there's not an answer now, but just something to think about is, um, you know, when I'm sitting, you know, at CC's with my kids, the traffic is super loud. So I was curious, like, what volume level would music need to be playing for it to be enjoyable? Or, you know, and how does that, I'm just curious how that'll intermix with, you know, traffic noise? And are there any safety concerns with adding more sensory, you know, ambience down there? So anyways, those are just some things that pop out. And then I was curious, I mean, are these all weather? I mean, do you, you wouldn't, once they're up, you leave them, right? Uh, or is there any kind of cleaning maintenance? Because goodness knows moss and all kinds of good stuff grows on everything over here. So I was just curious. Those are, you don't have to answer now, but those are just some of my big ones.
They're great questions. They are, uh, easy to answer. They are indoor, outdoor speakers. Obviously work inside and they are outside. A lot of the applications I did see weren't necessarily in the Pacific Northwest. Uh, we do have pretty harsh environment. Um, we do have some kind of cover adjacent to these poles since they're kind of close to buildings in downtown. So it's one thing to be out in the middle of the open, but they're, they're a little sheltered, which is favorable. But yeah, it's something you've got to take down annually, tidy up, things are going to break, you know. Lims are going to fall, we're going to lose a transmitter or an antenna or something. But yeah, it's, uh, the volume is another factor. I, I think this is kind of a, you know, my, my opinion, a little bit of a trial and error project. It's an experiment. It is, you know, useful. I don't, I mean, kind of a policy thought is, you know, like I said, how, when, who? What days of the week, you know, you know, what are the settings and the volume? Obviously it, you know, in the morning, it doesn't need to be as loud. Later in the day, a little louder, once it's a little darker or coming close to sunset, a little, a little quieter because people are going to be winding down the highway. So yeah, it's, it's something I, I mean, I think it can transmit. You know, I don't know if this is an FCC thing because CAS kind of handled broadcast when we had broadcast things in the past. But, you know, if we have summer stage going on, can we just play that throughout town too? Um, so just little things like that, but.
Yeah. For sure. Yeah. And I, um, you know, it's one of those things too, where I just don't know. I don't want to accidentally, you know, um, miss the mark on something because sometimes it's nice to just sit at a table on Main Street and have quiet. So I, yeah, and understanding like what the thought process is, but, but find like when and how long and how loud and all that. Um, council member Levitt, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted, uh, to take a second to just sort of chime in on and second some of your concerns, Councilman McHenry. Uh, I, I mean, my personal, my personal thought on this is if it's a $50,000 experiment, like maybe it's not an experiment worth having. Um, also can, also considering like we have weather here. That is like you were saying, not only about the maintenance of the speakers themselves, but how much time are you actually outside? I mean, g- given the fact that 50% of the year, your business on Main Street is inside businesses on Main Street, not on the street itself. Like there's, uh, at, at least in my mind, six months that these things are sitting, not being used, like not actively being used. And then I, I also just, I don't know, I just always feel like anytime I've been in any place where they're pumping music into like the atmosphere, then someone else is dictating my experience for me on some level and I'm not about that. So I, I think that like, i- it in some sense removes like what I would call a more open palette for what downtown is. And it starts to maybe paint that with some colors that, you know, maybe someone doesn't like. And I, I don't know, I just, I just, there's a lot about this that kind of seems like could be. I, I mean, the word experiment is good because I think you would get both good and bad data back from said experiment. So then the question is, is it $50,000 worth it for an experiment when we can put that $50,000 on something that's more of a sure thing? And that's just, that's a bit of a point and a bit of a, a concern at the same time. Maybe there was a question there. I'm not sure. But, uh, definitely I'm, I'm more reluctant than, than not on this one.
Thank you for sharing your feedback. Um, just since I don't see any other hands super quick, I'm going to say one random thing that popped into my head. Um, because why not, right? Um, have we thought at all about, you know, as an experiment, kind of going down that line of thinking? Just an alternate would be what if we had, what if we purchased portable, um, speakers? Since, you know, like I see them at Costco, right? I mean, I don't know. Do you know what I'm talking about? Like just the portable speakers that you can connect to Bluetooth or whatever. I know they wouldn't be hardwired. But like, what if businesses could check them out from the city and use the, I don't know, like is that where? And then we would have them to put along Main Street at various locations. Though security on them not disappearing might be an issue if they're not chained to the ground or something. But I don't know, just a random thought that I, um, popped into my head rather than just like hardwiring them and putting them up on poles and such.
Yeah, and again, trying not to sway either way, um, I, idea might be to try a smaller setup first and see how it goes. Are you, are we willing to tolerate it, you know, an under $20,000 experiment or not? Your guys' choice. I was just, I know, asked to find some suppliers and see what it was, so.
No, that's a great idea to start a little smaller and then grow it if we like it. And then if not, well, it was what it was. Oh, go ahead.
I would just say, uh, you know, our new council member loves those are great points too. Like, yeah, I wouldn't even thought of. But if you turn someone off to town, you're doing the opposite of that amount of development kind of thing. Or, or what if they love it? I, you know, just, everybody loves Leavenworth. When you go for Christmas, you expect Christmas, right? I mean, that's, that's Leavenworth. But, you know, we're, we don't have that kind of image. So, um, certainly, you know, anybody's guess here, what's the right idea?
Yeah, good point. Council member Naplin?
I've already expressed my concerns about this before and they were in line with, uh, what council member, uh, Levitt was saying. And, and Director Lenaszewski, you, you brought up what I've, I brought up before is we, we aren't a theme town. We aren't, you know, going to play reverian music because we're Leavenworth. I, I, in the summertime, when I think this would be used more frequently, a lot of our venues have live music already inside or even outside. And I just think it'd be obtrusive. What music do you choose? Are you going to irritate people? It just, it, it just seems, uh, like, um, a, a very limited use item to spend that money on. So I, I'm not in favor, not that we're voting, but it's, it's, I'm not interested.
Great. I don't see any more hands. So did you have other stuff too, Director?
Uh, just to touch on, and again, I know we've had a couple of technology issues today with some meetings. But making note of the Woodville Duval, uh, intersection study, so that, that isn't the packet. Obviously it's on consent. If it gets pulled off and goes away. You know, no harm, no foul. What we, we brought back what was talked about as one of these options to have ARPA or even it's TIP eligible project, you know, support, looking at what kind of things can we do on a operational basis? And maybe some small capital changes to the intersection to, to move more traffic efficiently and get a little more, um, a little more cycle work out of the signals. So I didn't get any calls today. I don't know if it was, we, we chatted about it last week briefly, but we do have a contract in there. Uh, we do have a contract with Transpo for on-call. Um, but we had put this to be an amendment just because it was like a special project and not the role of Transpo to go through the year with us on the on-call. So that was why it was an amendment, if you had any questions on that. But we really look, we want to look at, um, the intersection, analyzing the current traffic proposal alternatives uh, from proving the intersection and connecting streets. Study would determine possible improvements to the existing operations and safety issues within the existing roadway and its constraints. So it is on our tip. Uh, we all know it's a giant project on the capital level. But are there other things that we could do on the, you know, the smaller scale to see some improvement on our operations? Uh, and we still are working in conjunction with Wash Dot because they are going through and re, repurposing, rebuilding the signals in Duval. Um, so they will be improved. Um, they don't have an exact timeline from them. I think they're hoping to finish their design end of summer, fall, uh, and then implement. So that is, that is in the packet. That is something we can certainly chat out here because it was kind of an awkward topic.
I think there was one, um, in the Good to the Order council member Naplin. We are running low on time. And so I'm wondering, and also council member Schaefer had a quick question, but it was not ARPA related, but on that consent agenda item. So I'm just wondering if perhaps we might need to just pull it and, but I think it would be a really quick discussion on the normal agenda as well. Um, Mayor, do you want, do you, uh, for the people that are in person, do you guys want a few minutes? We could try to bump out that ARPA question related to that, or we could just save it, um, and pull it off the consent agenda so that we can discuss it and not be rushed. What do you think?
Um, I think we should attempt to get it done in two to three minutes here since it was a simple question. And then a five minute break and start the meeting two minutes late.
Sure, that works for me. Uh, council member Naplin, did you want to ask your question related to the ARPA on that one agenda item?
Yeah, I just, um, the, making, um, it, it seemed to be somewhat of a proposal of the funding source for that project of being 1 million from ARPA. And that hadn't been anything that council had previously discussed, I believe, on, um, Third Avenue.
Oh, the TIB item?
Yes.
Okay, there you go. I'm talking about, I pulled up the other one. I'm sorry.
Oh, it's.
I know, we're kind of jumping around. That's okay.
The TIB item, all it was listed as, if I recall, and then I had to pull that. Um, tho- those are eligible funds. We have no, uh, your finance director just listed everything that is eligible to be spent on that project, um, fund wise. And again, yes, I don't think we've earmarked ARPA funding for really anything at this point. But it is an eligible expense and I think that was the intent of the, the ask. It is the same project we asked for last year. So it is, it's nothing new there. It is compartmentalized a little bit. TIB really doesn't support it at the four million ask. They suggested two to two and a half. So that's where, you know, you're kind of at the graces of those, that, that group. We don't have to accept it. Should we get the, the, you know, the award? But I think there's still, you know, we're still unfortunately, fortunately, whatever we look at, trying to chase other grants too. So there is new programming out there, um, federally. So, um, we do have and will have some other, uh, hands out for part of the drainage and the culvert work. Uh, we will go after some of the mobility work through the Wash Dot. Um, safe routes, so trying to cobble together anything and everything we can, knowing the four million ask, which we did last year, uh, really isn't supported by TIB, so. And all we're doing is asking to go after the project. Yes, we would still have to fund it should we get it. But we, we do have some more time because we're another year late. So anyway, that was our, our intent and our direction to try to keep moving the project forward any way we can. So just one avenue.
Yeah, I don't mind submitting the grant. It wasn't that. I just, it sometimes is a slippery slope when things start showing up in agenda bills that that's a funding source. When, um, you know, it hadn't really been discussed as council. It's not on the list of priorities for ARPA spending. And in addition, I, I've been hearing a lot about using ARPA funding to pay for pay increases, ongoing pay increases. It will increase over time using ARPA funding. That isn't something that's on our priority list. So I, I just keep seeing ARPA funding being mentioned for things that council hasn't identified and it, it just was a little bit confusing.
Yes, no, it wasn't the intent, just a, a list. Um, by the time we get to build this, we may not be eligible to spend our funding to defeat over anyway.
Thank you. Um, council member Schaefer, did you want to ask your question as well, just in hopes that we can keep everything on consent that's on there?
Yes, may involve a little bit longer, longer answer. But Steve, part of the, uh, budget or the grant, uh, request was got, was involved Cherry Creek. Or excuse me, Cherry Valley Road. And my, I, I think I already know the answer to my question, but the, I'm assuming that has nothing to do with improving the intersection on 203.
Correct. Yeah, that, there's two programs. Yeah, we did lump this request into an arterial program, which is Third Avenue, big money. And then the preservation, which is straight up overlay money surfacing. And that's a smaller ask. And those are, tho- those projects do need to be on federally fast roads, which limits us somewhat. But Cherry Valley is a federally fast road and it is just for asphalt overlay of the entire corridor from Main Street down to just past the.
Yeah, yeah. So is there another grant or some other avenue we should go after for the intersection issues that we have there?
Uh, that's a longer conversation than this. Currently, nothing really hits home on that project. Yeah.
Yeah.
This is taking away from.
Obviously, and I, I know you know that better than anyone.
I do.
Maybe next time or when Laura is here, that would be a good, oh, Laura, you are here. I'm sorry. Uh, Laura, uh, is there something we should be going after specifically for the, uh, uh, intersection of 203 and Cherry Valley Road?
I would honestly, sorry, for the record, City of Duval Community Development Director Laura Thomas, uh, we would defer to Public Works Director. That department knows where the money is and the grants. Um, if something happened to come up that we saw within community development or another department, we would always share it with, um, our other departments.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Um, so with that, I'll just go ahead and point out, um, that we did not get to our biennial budget format discussion. We can either, um, add that to, or trying to think actually if we're allowed to add that to the agenda from the COW since this is technically a special meeting. We can't, right?
So, uh, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was looking at you, but I realized we're virtual, so you can't tell.
Yeah, I apologize. Um, so you can't add anything to a special meeting to take action on, but you can't add it to, to, for discussion purposes.
Okay, so I, I'm thinking, and I know we're down to council members. So if everyone's okay, maybe we just let that go to the next meeting. And Mayor, is that what you were thinking as well? I think we have a little bit of time before we would need to make a decision on that.
I do. Um, you know, the other side of it is we're, we're deep in the budget process. So changing the process in the middle of the stream um, would be challenging. So, um, I think it really needs to be a full council discussion, um, so that they can hear, uh, what staff has to say.
Yeah, and I know Director Mason had said that now would be the time to do it, uh, the opportune time to do it if we're going to. But I do, what I was saying is I think we have just a little bit of play, like it wouldn't have to be today, but we could talk about it next, uh, meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if council's okay with that, maybe we can just let that item go, um, to the next meeting. And then there's the, uh, council planning calendar as always under reports and also the King County wildfire risk reduction strategy, which is a really great read. Um, and with that, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 7:02. Thank you, everyone.
And we will resume our city council meeting in 7:05. I'd like to call the Monday, August 1st, 2022 Duval City Council Meeting to order. Would you please join me in the flag slip? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Clerk, would you please take the roll? Councilmember Isaacson. Councilmember Schaefer. Mayor Proton McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Mercer. Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Napland.
Here.
Councilmember Lovett. Councilmember Lovett.
Call you on mute if you're still there.
Mayor Oberlander.
Here. We have a quorum. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And Councilmember Napland and Lovett are on mute. So if you could please unmute and share your vote, that would be great.
Aye.
All right. I suspect Councilmember Lovett's probably still stepped away for a moment. Sure, he will be back, but we do have approval of this evening's council agenda. Next up is comments from the audience. We do have one member in public if you'd like. Oh, he's waving me off and he does not want to provide public comment this evening. Clerk McMillan, did we receive any written comment this evening?
No, we did not.
Okay, thank you. And it looks like we do not have any attendees this evening. So we'll go ahead and close comments from the audience. Do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So moved.
We're going to take one item off, but we're not.
That would have been under additions and corrections to the agenda.
Oh.
So we didn't get a motion for that.
Oh, we already discussed.
Yeah, we did discuss it. So I think that
second.
All right. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. I think the heatwave has us all a little bit off from the last week here. So moving on to schedule items, first up is mayor's report. It's been a busy last couple of weeks. We had the governor's pandemic after action review task force last week. Some really good presentations on some of the invisible challenges that were faced by specific groups, especially disability groups during the height of the pandemic, as well as the Hospitality Association. One little nugget that was quite interesting to hear is that during the eviction moratorium, that also applied to hotels. So if somebody stayed a night and didn't check out, they weren't allowed to evict folks. So there, this is part of that review process and lessons learned in planning how to prepare for the next pandemic and how to make sure that we don't harm while we're trying to protect. We also had the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Committee meeting. Was able to attend about half of that before attending the Sound Cities Association Board meeting. The legislative agenda is moving forward. We've done our votes and hopefully we'll have a report out from the committee on what that looks like coming forward that we can discuss at a later date. Sound Cities Association, routine business. We are obviously in the process of recruiting a new executive director for Sound Cities after Deanna Dawson moved on to be the CEO of Association of Washington Cities. And I believe that job announcement closes soon. I do not have an update as to how many candidates were received, but again, it's one of those positions where it's a really tough market to find qualified candidates. And with that, moving forward over the next couple of weeks, I will have the opportunity and my new role as Secretary of the Association of Washington Cities Board to have a leadership meeting of staff and the Vice President and President next Tuesday and talk about our work planning for the upcoming year. And that's my report. Do we have a report from King County Fire District 45 yet?
We do. Deputy Chief Moffett is here virtually.
Excellent. Welcome Deputy Chief. You have the floor.
Thank you. So I just wanted to advise that we're still on par, as always, with our EMS calls leading the, leading the pace with over our fire calls with, within the district. And basically, the one thing that I wanted to share with everyone in the group was a couple of weeks ago, it's kind of a shout out to everyone is our crews actually rescued three individuals from the river. So a lot of times we get these calls for for service, but without the heroics of our three firefighters on the boat, we actually saved three three females from the river. Monroe came in to help and they actually broke their boat. And we were able to access the women. We had to actually cut our way into helping them, but we we actually saved them. So I just wanted to give a shout out to our crews for that. And that was a couple of weeks ago. I'm going to be nominating them for an award within the district. So that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the deputy chief? Seeing none, that's fantastic work. And we really appreciate everything that Fire District 45 does to keep our community safe, especially when folks are venturing out into those unsafe river conditions without being prepared. So thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
Great. Moving on to the Duval PD report, Chief Dubac.
I'll be providing my report at the next council meeting, but just to hit on what Deputy Chief Moffett just stated, we had another incident on the river this past weekend on Saturday where we had three or four teenage boys who went out into the river and one of them got stuck in the current, started to panic and our officer was able to get to him and get him back to shore before anything bad happened. So the water is still pretty cold out there. You know, anything under 60 degrees is a can be life threatening. So people need to be aware of that. Have their life vests on and start paying attention to what their capabilities are in regards to swimming in the river currents and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Dubac. Any questions for Chief Dubac? Seeing none, we'll move on to council committee reports. First up is finance and administration. No report. Okay. Next up is land use. No report, no report. Okay. Moving on to public safety.
Let's see, we did meet last, last week. Let's see, as far as recruitment and hiring go, unfortunately, our sergeant candidate was disqualified with background check. And so we are relooking at the new candidate for that position. We still have two open officer positions and we did oral boards this morning. We have more tomorrow and more Wednesday for for that. So that's an ongoing ongoing thing. Let's see. Trying to look at highlights in my notes here. Our dispatch contract is coming up for renewal. We'll see more about that. Public Defender Isiqua, we don't anticipate a significant increase there in the contract with them. National Night Out, as most of us know, is tomorrow and those of us attending will meet at the police department. As Chief Dubac said, our water safety program has has yielded a number of positive results, including, you know, some recent recent recipes for the water. Oh, and a final item was, she did look into the amount of, you know, panhandling and similar types of issues that we have had locally in Duval. We've really just had five related calls in the last six months, so it is fairly low. Of course, the ones on personal property, you know, the police don't respond unless they're requested to by the, by the property owner. And as far as the activity we saw recently at Safeway, I haven't seen a repeat of that. At least one person told me they did, but it was not on Savory property, it was an adjacent, adjacent property. But at any rate, we discussed that and decided that additional action probably wasn't approved at this time. You know, unless, you know, a specific issue or issues come up. That's it.
Thank you. Do we have a report from the Public Works Committee this evening?
And I don't and Steve, remind me, did we meet in the last two weeks?
Not since the last meeting.
Okay, we have. Okay, okay. I didn't think so fast.
All right. Do we have any reports from the ad hoc committees this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to other council reports. Do any council members have anything that they would like to report about this evening? Councilmember Schaefer.
Just, just real quick, I did have the opportunity to attend a field trip that the Watership Forum sponsored and was excellent education process. We attended two different sites, one on the Toll River and one on the Soquonmi River where either on the Toll River is is a project that was completed a number of years ago related to salmon restoration. And on the Soquonmi River, it was a major project in progress down in the Fall City area. And those were, you know, it was great to see that the county came out and had their project managers and other, other knowledgeable county people talk about what was going on, what's going to happen, and what it looks like now, what it will look like in the future. So, so, you know, I was just a very nice experience and a lot of very enthusiastic people.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Schaefer. Moving on to administration, first up is general updates and then the city administrator recruitment with our deputy city administrator, Director Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll share my screen really quick. It's pretty quick update today. It's been a, it's been a busy couple of weeks, but we have a couple of items to share. So Open Gov update, today we went live with the building and public works phase two. So we're really excited. It launched better than we thought, so we're excited about that. Permits to date in Open Gov, we've issued 25. So I think we'll start to see those numbers obviously increase and we'll report back within just the community development report that we put out every other month. We have a solicitation out for the facilitator retreat. Councilmember McHenry has been working with our clerk on that item and the proposals are due on August 12th. Some good news, our city administrator, city administrator recruitment is going well. Stakeholder engagement began last week. Online advertising, advertising began also that week and it was blasted out to 700 possible candidates and has an active LinkedIn recruitment component. To date, we received 11 applicants and of those 11, our consultant feels that three are ideal candidates. Just a couple of other updates. Obviously, we're still continuing on the 2324 budget. Work that is continuing and in progress. Dana's met with the majority of departments, but we're still plugging in because it's new for us going into Open Gov. Again, Sabres Soquonmi will be filming in Duval this month. So if you see crews out on the 17th or 19th, know that that's part of our economic development grant with the Port of Seattle. The farmers market is every Thursday. Music in the park is continuing. Obviously, at the park on Wednesdays. And let's not forget tomorrow night, we have our Night Out Against National Crime, one of our biggest community events of the year. So I know that the police department and other departments and council are anticipating and that's always well attended. Community development, our staffing capacity still, you know, it's, we're obviously struggling without having a planner right now and not being able to recruit. Our, our consultant capacity continues to be substantially reduced. Permit revenue, though, is still continuing to trend up. We did get a new applicant for our senior planner recruitment. It is of an associate level, so we will go back out and identify that job as both senior and associate and then a pay accordingly if we end up choosing an associate planner. The Housing Action Plan meeting is on the 16th for the internal meeting with all of the Valley Cities. They are finishing that up as honestly as we speak. Some really good news, because I always like to share good news as well, is it looks like our consultant that didn't think they'd have the capacity for our housing needs assessment and housing action plan does. So you will see a contract for that at the next council meeting. If there are any questions on any of the slides, I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Director Thomas? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. We do not have any special presentations or public hearings this evening. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. We do not have any special presentations or public hearings this evening. We have one item of unfinished business, Agenda Bill twenty-two dash fifty-five, resolution approving Rio Vista Landing final plat for decision. Director Lenishewski.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens, staff, Steve Lenishewski, Public Works. So before you is the final paperwork for the Rio Vista Landing file plat. Switch screens here, sorry. So the plat as submitted on the screen, oh, I moved my screens and this is not like teams. Did it follow?
It looks like a blue line.
See, we all changed up, used Teams all day, and now I gotta go back and share the right screen. My apologies. So when you have Teams and you drag something into the screen, it just stays on the screen you had, right? Okay, so this is what the Rio Vista Landing, that name has changed. You can only record a plat in the county that hasn't been recorded in name before. So Rio Vista had ours, obviously, already been taken, so it's Rio Vista Landing. This is third at one forty-third place, Third Avenue is just to the left of your screen. This is two seventy-second place, the Glen Karen neighborhood, sixty-seven units. You have Track J, which is the city park, and this is the other twelve, no, ten units on the south leg. Switching a bit. Go away real quick, I'm gonna flip to the cover sheet. So it's been a very long, long process. They do have everything at a point where the city staff can recommend, they received their final plat. There was one question which did bring about a recommended addition to the plat document itself. So I will just show you the plat itself, taking a second to load. So the restrictions are listed. So we are recommending adding a restriction to clarify. And I think for the councils, you know, just not education, but just edification, the last two plats we have been dealing with, the Toll Brothers, which is Walden or Duval Village, are very complicated. They have development agreements. They have lasted and lived a very long time. So they're not normally this difficult. There's not normally this much overlap of public and private spaces. So yes, it's complicated. Yes, this is busy. Yeah, it's, what is this thing? Eight pages? Final plat is typically four pages, so there's just a lot going on here. So what we are looking to recommend is an addition of a number nineteen. And it is and has to do with the shared and overlapping and then distinct types of maintenance that each entity will provide. So the city will be responsible, of course, for some, the HOA for others. And there's a little more overlap on the HOA's obligations because it's so co-mingled. Skip to exhibit in the packet. Right here. And another note just for folks too, when we record any document at county level, plats can only be in black and white. So this color exhibit goes in the conditions, the CCNR's conditions, covenants, and restrictions as an attachment, because they really only want black and white on there too. So we do have a black and white, one of these that is shaded. So the hard part to discern in meets and bounds, which a plat is typically meets and bounds, statement of backs, block corners, and everything else with northings and eastings and bearings and points. There's ten percent of the open space of the project is within Track J. So those pink areas are described and will be the maintenance responsibilities in perpetuity, including landscaping, irrigation, and maintenance of the HOA. So what we have added is a note, we recommend that the motion add a note, and I have it, I can bring it up when we're ready. But the note will read as depicted within, this will be new nineteen, as depicted within Exhibit B of the Rio Vista Landing's covenants, conditions, and restrictions document, the Rio Vista Landing's HOA shall permanently perpetually be responsible for maintenance and irrigation costs slash obligations of the perimeter landscape area, which is in the subdivision required, which is the subdivision required, ten percent open space that resides in Track J, period. The assigned maintenance area is notated with a peach color in CCNR's version or a zigzag line type hatch, the black and white version that is recorded with King County. So when we get to the point, if somebody is prepared to make a motion on the item, you know, you would move to approve the agenda bill, and I'll pull up a note, approving the resolution for the Rio Vista Landing final plat, including staff presented new restriction to be added on page two with new item nineteen and accepting associated sewer and water recovery contracts. The water and sewer recovery contracts, I'll just keep this document up. They were required to install utility along and off their frontage. And utilities, a little different than transportation or parking permits, are one hundred percent borne by the applicants, but they can distribute the fair pro rata share to any other adjacent parcel that may tie into them on a per foot cost basis. So staff approves those. They submit invoices like a contractor would do with their own work. We verify, approve, or disapprove, and then do the math on the split per foot per lot. So it's a hundred dollars a foot, and you've got a parcel on the north and a parcel on the south, fifty dollars a foot on the north, fifty dollars a foot on the south, for the frontage's length is what they pay when they tie into it. It is a twenty-year covenant that we are responsible and obligated to recover the funds on and then transmit them back to the contractor or applicant who put them in action for the city. But they do have a twenty-year sunset. It used to be fifteen, so. I think with that, I don't really have anything else to, I guess, address or add to on the plat. It's again, a long process. Many inspections, planning, you know, public works, building, public spaces. The applicant's been working very hard. You know, the current owner wasn't the original owner, so there's been, you know, history and getting everybody up to speed on, so. At that, I am done talking. Answer any questions, should you have them? But we, as staff, are ready for a motion.
Thank you, Director Lenishewski. And does anyone on council have any questions?
I do. Is there a, Steve, were you saying we should have a modification to the agenda bill, or it's, the agenda bill itself is okay as stands?
No, so I think Councilmember Schaefer, adding a new note, as we conferred with our legal counsel earlier today after some questions. So staff does propose, we move forward with the addition of new such, new item nineteen, and the applicant has been advised, you know, hasn't contested this. And the bold text at the bottom here would just be what somebody would make the motion on. Since the pack was amended by staff.
Okay, good. Thank you, Steve.
Great. Would someone like to make a motion? Councilmember Schaefer.
So move, Schaefer?
Would you please read the language?
Oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move to approve Agenda Bill twenty-two fifty-five, approving the resolution for Rio Vista Landing final plat, including staff presented new restriction to be added on page two, new item number nineteen, and accepting associated sewer and water recovery contracts.
Second.
Right. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on to new business, Agenda Bill twenty-two dash seventy, ordinance adopting revised salary schedule for nonrepresentative employees. Our city attorney did confirm that for anything to approve on this tonight, we would need four votes. I do not believe there are four votes here tonight for any changes, so we will, unless I miss something in committee of the whole, we will postpone this until the next meeting. Councilmember Hope?
So are we going to discuss possibly making a decision on the city administrator salary?
We can if we have four votes. I don't know that we have four votes. So there has to be four yes votes in order for anything to move forward tonight. So are there any no votes on the city administrator salary? I'm not hearing any then, so that what we could do is entertain a motion to approve the wage scale for city administrator as presented in the nonrepresented proposed salary schedule. Director or city attorney Kenny?
So it would be by ordinance, and so we would need to just do a very quick, well, I guess the ordinance is section one, twenty-twenty-two salary schedules are amended as shown in Exhibit A, and just direct that that would be only, it should council choose, that would be only reflect the updated city administrator scale at one five zero at the end of the page. Everything else would be unchanged from existing. But we are passing the order, it would be through the ordinance.
If somebody would like to make a motion, you're welcome to.
Okay, let me take a shot. I move to approve Agenda Bill twenty-two seventy, adopting an ordinance amending the twenty-twenty-two salary schedules with or only for the city administrator position and no other at this time.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. City Attorney Kenny, does that pass muster as far as the motion?
Yes, I think so. Thank you so much.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Bill twenty-two dash seventy-one, Employee Recruitment Policy Personnel Policies, HR twenty-twenty-two dash zero zero one. Director Thomas, and I will note, this is another one where we've not, we discussed it at the last meeting. However, two of our council members are not present, so we may just want to do a quick overview of this and push this to the next meeting for decision. Director Thomas?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we have talked a couple of times about the draft recruitment policy, but this is the first time that you'll see an actual draft in your packet. What we did is we had early discussions with the Finance Administration Committee and obviously with the mayor and amongst directors as well. We pulled together quite a bit of research, and what we found is that, you know, cities with the strong mayor form of government usually tend to go in one direction, and cities with the city manager form of government tended to go in another direction. So I kept more focus on the strong mayor form of city government. And so you can see, I'm going to provide some highlights. So it is drafted as a human resources policy because eventually we're going to go to an employee manual, so you'll start to see that move forward. Hopefully here, once our city administrator gets on board and gets hired, and we can amend what we call chapter four, which is our personnel policies. So we drafted it just in that for now, but we'll still need to go back and amend Title Four temporarily as an ordinance, and we would do that at the next meeting. So technically, this evening, we wouldn't be able to approve this particular policy because it needs an ordinance as well. And it would also likely require a budget amendment. We don't know exactly what that would look like because we don't know how often we would use it, so we would do kind of a best professional guess on that. The policy includes a purpose definitions and general provision section, so hopefully everybody's had an opportunity to review that. This is a temporary policy. It would expire on twelve thirty-one twenty-four. It does include a recruit, what we call recruiter incentive, so that would be somebody internally, so a staff member from any department.
Director Thomas? I just wanted to point out, it would not expire in twelve thirty-one twenty-four. This would be an ongoing policy, so it didn't have to be reactivated every time we have an employment issue. For the discussion we had internally, it was knowing that this situation is going to extend, at least for the next five years, if not longer, very possibly, that we did not want an extension date on it, or, I'm sorry, expiration date.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Mayor. So we will go ahead and make that change for the next version. We included a recruiter incentive, and that is a financial incentive to an internal staff member if they help recruit a candidate and that candidate makes it through a probationary period. It allows the mayor to offer up to ten thousand dollars or up to two months of employee starting salary, whichever one is lower. Maybe we want to talk about, obviously, what defines a difficult-to-recruit position. So we look at like, you know, how do we advertise it, specialty advertising? You know, what's the job market? What are the specific requirements and skill sets for the position? I did provide the definitions of what it means to, you know, for a difficult recruit and a financial incentive. It's a pretty simple, you know, it's a pretty simple policy, so if there are council questions, now would be a great time, as I said, at the next meeting, if council provides a go-ahead on this policy, then I would draft the ordinance and have it ready and prepared for adoption at the next council meeting.
Are there any questions from council? Mayor Pretend McHenry and then Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you. Sorry, trying to juggle my screen here. Just a couple of things. None of them really make or break for me, but when I, just for consistency in language, I noticed, sorry, I'm just trying to find it one more time, I passed it. In three point one, under applicability, it mentions the mayor shall have the authority to designate specific classifications, you know, and the rest of that there. And then scrolling down, there was another section where it mentioned the mayor or their designee. So I just, because I'm fresh out of doing the procedures and we were really intentional about like inserting the city administrator, I was just curious where that was in here or what the, just the reasoning, I guess, behind. Because I just want to make sure it's all encompassing or just kind of outlines the process in general. And I don't, sorry, I don't know if that's for Director Thomas or for the mayor, or, you know, if there's, I don't know who's taking that.
It should be mayor or designee, because if we have a city administrator that's qualified to make that decision or a city administrator could delegate it to a department director, because our department directors are in the weeds. So depending on who, you know, which person you have in which position, if you have an absence of a city administrator, it would be me or a designee. So for example, Director Thomas, the senior planner position, I would say, I support this, and I would either sign off on it or say that she can sign off on it.
Okay, so yeah, that was the only spot I saw where that addition was missing, was on three point one under applicability, that first general statement. And then just one other quick question, I heard. Well, it's more, so, you know, reading in some of the three point five, or sorry, three point six and three point seven, the expiration, which sounded like you said you don't want to have, I mean, I guess, for me, the one perk of having an expiration is to make sure we really reevaluate it. If we do want to continue it, it can simply be put on consent agenda, I think. Unless I'm missing something, maybe it wouldn't, couldn't be, but it seems like it'd be relatively quick. I recognize we can terminate it at any time, given, you know, the three point seven there, but I guess for me, there have been times where we want to check in on a policy or we want to just revisit it. And so to me, the expiration date could be a tool to do that, unless there's an alternative way to make sure that that really stays on our radar.
So I think there's a simpler alternative that wouldn't result in having to do full agenda bills and votes. And that would be, there's a couple of different options. One would be just adding a line in that an annual report must be provided to council on use of the program prior to presentation of the biennial budget or amend by budget adjustments. And then the other point to acknowledge is that if there is not money put in the budget for those specific recruitment bonuses, that there wouldn't be money to provide. So there's two ways to go to it. You can, for example, we have a parks board right now in code. We don't have an active parks board, so you can have it exist but not funded. And that's a pretty common way to make sure that you have some stability and continuity while still providing options.
Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Schaefer?
Just a quick comment. Just a quick comment, not really a question, but this 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 is in line with with a lot of the practices of private industry. I know there's, you know, many differences between private and public jobs, but nonetheless, I I understand and support the idea of providing these types of incentives. And especially with the the, you know, the definition as documented in here of the, what we call a difficult, difficult to recruit. So so anyway, I think this is a a good step on our part.
Councilmember Naplin.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember McHenry that I appreciated the temporary provision, just mostly just so there would be a very specific check in and that it could, you know, potentially go on consent to be reinstituted, but or to be extended. I do think when we're first putting in a new policy, that I've been trying it for years and bringing it back. That's just my personal feeling. One thing on the applicability. One thing we've talked about, you know, even in our procurement policy is that when there are exceptions made, which is what this would be somewhat of pay a hiring bonus. But it'd always be documented each time it's utilized. So there would be a paper trail of what situation was, did they do standard advertising? Was there specialty advertising tried? Some of these reasonings that, you know, they're very specific, but then there's kind of a catchall that doesn't seem to be very specific. It's under three point fourteen, funny enough called specific requirements, but just as technical expertise certifications, licensing limit the pool of qualified applicant applicants. I mean, I guess it's the little two items that you've tried to recruit and you didn't get any. So it feels like some of these reasons are more loose than others. I don't know. I guess I I'd be okay with it as long as it was very, there was a paper trail of documentation of exactly what reasons the incentive bonus was justified.
Director Mason, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's something that you would need for the audit trail with a with a formal policy anyways, correct?
Yes, we would need criteria that was met.
And the paper trail in the personnel file, correct?
We would have a paper trail for sure.
Yeah, I my our expectation would be that each of the criteria be addressed and how we came to the conclusion that it was difficult to recruit and we would have to write that up in memo format to the mayor and or designee or actually really both, I would assume to, you know, to be able to take advantage of that policy.
Correct.
Thank you.
Great. Any further questions or comments on this one? Not seeing any for now. So I think based on what we heard at our last meeting from the other two council members, I think there's tacit support for moving something forward. So hopefully we can get in touch with them to review this and we can go ahead and bring a formal policy back at the next meeting. All right. Next up is agenda bill twenty two dash seventy two, discussion of property tax levy lid lift re levy. Again, this is a new one for our council member Levitt. Councilmember Isaacson and Mercer were very involved in the conversation last time. Director Mason, a quick question for you is, is this decision need to be made this evening?
It should be. It should be made this evening, the next council meeting at the very latest. We need to let them know by September first. Or they
I would recommend without the other two present that we postpone this to the next meeting if folks are okay with that, to give especially Councilmember Levitt some time to get up to speed on the issue with Director Mason. And I believe this one would also need four votes and we might not we might have a split vote on this one. Are there any other thoughts to that from council?
Director Mason, is that is that okay? We postponed this? Maybe I misunderstood what you said.
Yes, we we need to report the council's decision to the King County Assessor's Office by September first. So we still have some time.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay. All right, Councilmember McHenry.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind you all that I will not be available at the next meeting. I might be able to call in. It would be very tricky for me where I'll be. So just wanted to remind everybody about that. But I don't know. Does I mean, so are we just not going to discuss it at all again tonight then?
We can if council wants to. I'm not sure the value without the other voices at the table and 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 making sure Councilmember Levitt has the background, but it's ultimately a council decision.
Okay. I'm fine either way. I feel like we got a lot out at the last meeting. I'm not sure what else has changed, but yeah, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Napland.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify with Director Mason. Is it both the decision of whether we would re levy and the decision of whether we would go forward with a different calculation? Are both those decisions required by the next meeting?
No, the decision whether we would re levy the excess from the past three years. So it's about forty seven thousand dollars. That decision is due by September first. The second decision, which is whether a council would like to to levy the amount that is allowable. And that would be a decision that would be made when we put together the property tax levy. So when that goes to vote for council.
Okay, I I guess my question would just be for Councilmember McHenry and if she doesn't feel comfortable sharing if she has any concerns or questions or where I don't know if that's even appropriate to ask ahead of time. I just I feel a little concerned that she won't be at the next meeting, even though it's understandable.
Mayor Pretend Henry, I'll let you respond to that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what everyone else is feeling. I I think I already, you know, weighed in on this quite a bit last time. You know, I'm not as of right now in favor of trying to recoup anything from the last three years. So you know, I don't know if we want to just split and possibly make that decision tonight, just so it's done. Or I mean, if you guys make it at the next, you know, meeting, it'll just be what it is. It in general sounded like most of council was leaning toward that way as well. So that's kind of the beauty of being on a council of seven, right, is one of us can be gone and and, you know, the rest can carry the weight. So I'm not too concerned to answer Councilmember Napland's question on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you.
Yeah, so just to weigh in, I am also not in favor of recruiting past past taxes. I realize there's there's other items to consider for future taxes, but if if since we do need four votes, I I guess I'm asking the other council members comfort level and kind of giving their their views. And if that's the case, we could add if we do have four or votes in favor of the of not recouping the past taxes, we could at least accomplish that tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Hoag and Councilmembers Levitt, do you feel comfortable sharing? Councilmember Hoag.
I do. I am not in favor of recouping for the past this item.
All right, Councilmember Levitt, and this is new. I think that you would, it's clear that we now have four. So it's up to you whether you'd like to speak to this. And I think this would be an appropriate. I'll have to check with our attorney that you could, but would be an appropriate abstention since you haven't been involved in the conversation.
Yeah, that's I would I would abstain from this one just because I have I honestly have zero context on this, but in and that there's four here. I have full faith in those four votes that they have done far more research than I at this point.
All right. Then in that case, if a council member would like to make a motion, please do so.
It'd be a modified motion.
Shouldn't be. It shouldn't. I don't think it should be modified. I think it's get to it.
Sorry, does anyone see? I was trying to find where the language was on.
I think everybody's looking for it right now.
My fault. I don't think I put very good language in the agenda bill, but really what we just need is a decision that council has decided not to re levy the the forty seven thousand dollars of of levy lid lift monies going forth. So not to re levy.
Can I ask a quick? So is that on the bullet items under action needed? Is that I'm trying to, is that the first bullet?
Yeah. So one of the actions do so it's basically do not re levy the amount that was under levied. That's it.
Okay, so the first bullet is the because they look very similar. Isn't my brain is doing weird things. So I'm figuring. Okay, I'll give it a go. I move that we do not re levy the forty seven thousand six hundred ninety dollars that was under levied for the last three years over the next two years in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. No, I'm sorry.
Right after. I'm moving that we do not re levy.
Okay, so I'm I move that we do not re levy the forty seven thousand six hundred ninety dollars that was under levied.
Great. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. And if we have an abstention, now would be the time to voice that.
I will abstain on this one.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. With that, the motion is passed. And we do not have any further business this evening. So unless there are objections, we are adjourned and Councilmember Levitt can go to sleep on late at night on East Coast time. Thank you all.
Thanks, everybody.
Well, not in my history, but.